Good evening, welcome to the Brockton School Committee meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025, today, 7:00 PM, located at the George Ram Little Theater. Dear visitors, welcome to the meeting of the Brockton School Committee. This is the agenda that will be discussed this evening. Please note that hearing of visitors are included. If you have a statement or question, please give your name to the secretary. In addition to attending the public view this meeting via television or Comcast Channel 8, 107 H, 1071 HD version and online via this link, www.youtube.com/thebrocktonchannels. I will call this meeting to order by establishing a quorum, but before we do that, can we just salute the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call this meeting to order by establishing a quorum. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yeah.
Mr. Vega?
Here.
Ms. Azak?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
And we do have Representative Gomes on, I don't want to say Zoom, what is it, Teams? Are you present?
Here, yes.
Thank you. And Superintendent, myself, Tony Rogers, Vice Chair is present. Hearing the visitors pursuant to school policy, each person is requesting to speak. Shall it be allowed a maximum of three minutes? Since the period is limited to 15, a total of five people are permitted to speak on the first come, first served basis. First come, let me gather myself, first served basis. As the secretary indicated, there is no one here tonight to speak, so we will report on the next agenda item, report of the superintendent of schools. The floor is all yours.
Thank you so much. Tonight, we're going to start with A, which is recognitions, and I'm going to pass it along to Councilmember Vega.
Good evening. I have the honor of, right, on behalf of the school committee, recognizing two incredible groups of people. The first works with a program called Blessings in a Backpack. And if you're unfamiliar with this program, in a nutshell, it feeds thousands of Brockton students and families each year. It's a program that brings together a small army of volunteers in the Brockton cafeteria who then put together in an assembly line format, lunch, breakfast, dinner, repeat, and distribute that to our families and eat. It's an incredible program that I only became aware of just over a year ago through my friend Lisa O'Donnell, and it's a program that quietly supports and impacts our entire district. And I say quietly because the folks involved that spearheaded are here tonight, and they don't take the limelight at all. When you walk in, there's just a synergy that's going on, and if you were looking for the lead, you might not be able to find it because they gel with their volunteers at a level that I haven't seen in an organization like this before. So it's my great privilege tonight to offer a certificate of recognition to both Lisa O'Donnell and Maureen Carpenteri. That certificate recognizes the invaluable work they do to organize and sustain Blessings in a Backpack, which provides thousands of take-home meals to Brockton students and families each year. Maureen and Lisa, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
The second group that we want to recognize tonight is BCA, Brockton Cable Access. They have been the eyes and ears of the city for quite some time, and the eyes and ears of the school district. So it is with great honor that we recognize them for their continued commitment to serving as the eyes and ears of the city of Brockton by providing real-time coverage of city government, real-time coverage of city government that empowers residents to be better informed and more engaged citizens of their community. BCA, thank you.
Thank you. You might hear a super.
Thank you. We actually have one other recognition this evening, but we're actually going to be postponing it until our next meeting when Councilmember Gomes can be here, so it was for the Brockton High School Drama Club. So at this point, we're going to be moving on to Item B, which is the teaching and learning update.
So good evening, thank you for joining us tonight. It is an incredibly busy time of year, and the Brockton Public Schools is a very exciting time of year. There is so much going on, so many incredible events. It's actually impossible to kind of go through all of the different events, but I hope you do follow our social media because they, it's pretty active from all the great things happening around our district. So tonight, I'm just going to go over a few of them as we do have our SEL presentation this evening as well. So I want to start with a few of the events that happened last Friday. So BPS hosted the annual Huntington Parade, which featured a great turnout from our community, an incredible show of patriotism and BPS pride from all of the schools who participated. We are glad to have representation from the school committee, City Council, BHS, Gilmore South, Davis East, Downey North, Plough, BVLA, the Ashfield Promise, and West, along with the Brockton Police, School Police, and the Fire Department. I want to give a special shout out to Assistant Superintendent Karen Spalding for all of the work that she took on to make this year's parade such an incredible success. I know it was the 126th parade that Brockton has ever had. It was my first, and it was truly incredible. Also on Friday, the Kennedy School hosted its beloved and annual tradition, Kennedy Commemoration Day. The whole school community came together to celebrate and honor the legacy of President Kennedy with students singing patriotic songs for a huge crowd of classmates and families, as well as students stepping up to give short remarks honoring President Kennedy on what would have been the day after his 108th birthday. Finally, last Friday was also a special day at the Barrett Russell, where students, staff, and the school community took time out to remember Mr. Tony, Tony Fernandez, who was a beloved custodian at the school. The flagpole outside the school was dedicated in Mr. Tony's honor, and going forward, the last Friday in May every year will be Mr. Tony Day at the Barrett Russell. I want to extend a huge thank you to Kenny's Karate, Cynthia Rivas Mendez, and all those who worked to organize a terrific after-hours event that I had the chance to take part in recently. The after-hours event was a great opportunity to not only see how our students are excelling outside of a school environment, but to connect with so many families and members of the BPS community in an informal setting. I am looking forward to the opportunity to do more events like this, where I get to come out into the community rather than having the community come to us in the schools, and I'll make sure to share updates when those events come along. Also, I want to recognize the five students who recently completed their work as part of the BRIGHT program at Brockton High School, bringing the total number of students who have fully completed the program to 19. BRIGHT, which stands for Bridge for Resilient Youth and Transition, is a grant-funded program brought to us via the Brookline Center. If you've passed by the BRIGHT room here at BHS, you may have noticed it's unlike any classroom you've seen because it's a very pleasantly lit, almost lounge-like place tailored to students who are returning to school after a prolonged absence. The BRIGHT program allows these students to transition back into life at the high school in a calmer space that provides them direct access to clinical and academic supports. And when our most recent class of students completed the program, it also served as an opportunity to host an open house for parents and community members to see the space and its impact up close. Congratulations to all the students who completed the program thus far, and a big thank you to our social emotional learning team who have worked hard to make this incredible program a reality here at BHS. We have a few exciting updates from our professional development team. First, our educators have had several opportunities to take part in youth mental health first aid and safety care training over the course of the school year. These trainings give staff the tools to recognize mental health crises and respond in a way that de-escalates situations and directs them to care. BPS has also, number two, built a new partnership with the Benson Henry Institute and Massachusetts General Hospital to offer the PART program to BPS staff. The PART program teaches participants a variety of mind-body practices and helps participant and self-care interventions. It is a nine-week positivity and relaxation training program that helps participants develop a self-care routine to manage stress, improve their outlook, and enhance their quality of life. These techniques can be effectively adapted for use in educational settings with students. And three, finally, Fitchburg State University and Brockton Public Schools have renewed their partnership to offer graduate courses to BPS staff taught by BPS staff at a reduced tuition rate. This initiative will launch in the summer and is expected to be offered multiple times throughout the 2025-2026 academic year. And finally, I want to take a moment to congratulate all of the seniors who were recognized earlier today at the annual BHS Senior Awards right in this room. Students earned recognition from leaders and teachers across the content areas and activities at the high school for their extraordinary achievements over the course of their four years at BHS. It was so great to just sit and learn as our department heads and educators recounted the amazing contributions these students have made throughout their time with us. They've set the bar very high for the boxers coming up behind them. And at this point, I would like to invite up our incredible social emotional learning team, who's going to give you an update to the work that they have been doing thus far this year.
Thank you, Dr. Tillyani. Good evening, and thank you for inviting us here tonight. We're very excited to be here and share our results with you. Before we begin, my name is John Snellgrove. I'm Director of Social Emotional Learning. To my left, I have Linda LaCurdo, who is the Coordinator of School-Based Therapeutic and Behavioral Health Services. And then to her left, we have Mara Mello, who's a Coordinator of School-Based Mental Health Services. So thank you all, we're excited to be here tonight. Next slide. So this year, this academic year, 2425, we introduced a universal screening tool district-wide as part of our multi-tiered systems of support. This will allow us to better identify students' social, emotional, and mental health needs early and accurately, and those two phrases, early and accurately, are important. This is similar how we have always done historically, looking at academic screenings, but this now allows us to look at the whole, complete child. The tool was carefully chosen by a committee of BPS staff for its alignment with Castle V, SEL competencies, which are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. It also includes mental health measures, offering a comprehensive view of student well-being. The screener consists of 35 self-report questions completed independently by students in grades three through 12. This approach encourages honest reflection and lets us hear directly from students. Combining SEL and mental health screening helps us provide targeted supports that promote student success, both emotionally and academically. And as you can see on the slide, I'm sorry, as you can see on the slide, the name of the screener is the SSIS SEL Brief Plus Mental Health. I know it's a mouthful, it seems like an equation, but that's the name of the screener. It assesses those areas, the SEL areas, those five Castle competencies I spoke to, and then the EBCs, the Emotional Behavioral Concerns, specifically internalized and externalized behaviors, and it gives us a stress index or stress levels. It was administered this year, this academic year, in October of '24, and then again, just this past April. It's offered to all students in grades three through 12. Nearly 7,800 students participated in the fall, and almost 8,000 participated in the spring. So the response rate, the average, was 75%. Next slide, please. So why is it important? Why did we give the survey? To capture the students' perception, both of their SEL skillset, you know, where they feel most confident, and then where there's room for growth, and also their stress levels. And as we'll get into it, you'll see, our students are stressed. Our students are stressed. The second, most important reason why we do this screener is to identify baseline patterns, right? Beyond anecdotal. In academia, we can look at test scores, and we can look at results, and we have tangible evidence. Up until now, it's really, oh, this student seems this way, or this student seems that way, and we're working with the families to try to figure out what's going on, but capturing student voice, in my opinion and the opinion of this team, is really, really most meaningful. And then we use the results to inform our interventions, targeted, direct interventions, whether it's individual counseling if a student needs that, if it's small group instruction or small group counseling, if it's school-wide interventions or school-wide programming, this information gives us all of that. And often, we're learning, we're an educational institution that do really, we do really, really well supporting the whole child, but often, we're learning, we can't do it alone. We bring in our parents, we bring in our community stakeholders, and this information allows us to do that. And then lastly, fostering dialogue and educational discussions. When we're sitting at the IST meetings, we're thinking about, you know, the student is successful in these areas but not successful in these areas. What does the SEL screener say? What is that child saying to us? And we look at the information there as well.
The next few slides are going to sort of capture some data for us. So the screening tool that we use provides us with an enormous amount of data, way too much data to have shared with you tonight, so we're really trying to catch a glimpse for you tonight. We do have the ability to look at very specific student data, we can look at what's, how students answered specific questions, we have the ability to look at very specific school data, how did third grade answer at the Downey School, how did fifth grade answer at the Angelo School? And then we have the ability to look at district-wide data, to look at patterns and trends across the district. For the purpose of tonight's presentation, we wanted to just give you a few snapshots or highlights of the district-wide data, comparing the fall data to the spring data. So on this first slide, what you're looking at is district-wide SEL data, comparing the results from the fall to the spring. The fall data is in the orange, the spring data is in the blue, and as you can see, the majority of students, approximately 75% of students, again, in grades three through 12, reported that they feel competent or advanced in their social-emotional skill development, which is, which is good news. It's self-report, and that's how, how our students are reporting. These scores remain pretty stable between the fall and the spring, which indicates consistency over time, which again is good, but the stability also highlights that we do have room for growth. We do want to see some growth between fall and spring, or between one year to the next, but again, this is our first full year implementing the screener, so it's sort of our baseline year. So we do recognize that we need to continue to strengthen our supports and interventions in this area. This next graph is pretty similar. We're looking at district-wide stress levels, and like John was saying, our students are very stressed. You'll hear a little bit more about it specifically tonight. The data clearly indicates that many of our students are experiencing pretty significant levels of stress. So approximately half, or 47% of the respondents in grades three through 12, report experiencing low stress levels, while just over half of students, 53%, indicate moderate to high stress levels. So stress levels are definitely a concern that require our attention. We want to understand the prevalence of stress among our students. It's essential, obviously, stress can impact academic performance, it impacts social interactions, and it impacts students' overall well-being. So we want to get a good handle on why students are stressed, what is the, what is the area of stress? And we recognize that it's very important that we prioritize strategies and interventions aimed at reducing stress and supporting mental health throughout the school year. This next slide is looking at gender differences. So when we're looking at data by gender, we do observe a noticeable difference in reported stress levels. On this graph, the green shows low stress, the yellow is moderate, and the orange is high stress, and again, it's comparing fall and spring, but it's also looking at females and males. As you can see from the graphs, female students tend to report higher levels of stress in comparison to their male counterparts. This trend does align with the research on adolescent well-being, but it does highlight the importance of considering gender-specific factors when we're working on developing supports and interventions. So for us, recognizing the differences allows us to tailor our interventions more effectively to address the unique needs of all of our students. This next slide sort of captures our students with disabilities. So in looking at our students with disabilities, we're looking at SEL and stress level proficiencies, again, from fall to spring. 67.8% reported, students reported feeling competent or advanced in their SEL skills in the spring, which is a slight increase from the fall, while those identifying as emerging or developing skills decreased to 32.2%, which shows positive progress, which is, which is great. That's, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for any progress from, from fall to spring or from year to year. So stress levels in this group have also slightly decreased from fall to spring, which is, in contrast, with the district-wide trend, which is stable or slightly increasing. So this might suggest that our targeted supports in special education, whether it's our students' IEPs, related services, small group instruction, therapeutic support services, are actually helping and supporting students and, and helping to show those increases. And so our continued focus in this area will be key to maintaining the progress for these This next graphic shows that more English-language learners are reporting high levels of stress. Considering what's happening in our world today, especially in politics, this isn't surprising. We recently partnered with Kelly Jones, the Director of our Bilingual Education Department, to present a webinar at Social Emotional Learning Alliance from Massachusetts. We focused on supporting all students, especially those from different linguistic and cultural backgrounds. Making sure every student feels safe, supported, and valued continues to be a major part of our work. This slide represents the difference in SEL and stress levels by grade from fall to spring. We've seen an overall rise in students reporting high stress from fall to spring, especially at the middle school level. This makes sense, as middle school is often a tough time for students as they go through a lot of changes. The spring screening also happens around MCAS testing, which can add to student stress. These results show how important it is to keep offering strong social-emotional support, especially to our middle school students. This slide shows the five main areas of social-emotional learning, self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making, based on Castle's framework. Across the district, students' self-management scores were the lowest. This includes skills like handling emotions, managing stress, staying focused, and working towards goals. These results tell us that many students don't yet feel confident in these areas, and there's a clear sign that we need to keep focusing on self-management in our SEL work to help our students become more successful.
So the key points to pursue are the key takeaways for you tonight, and like Linda said, there's volumes of data that we could have extrapolated and brought here tonight. We'd be here till midnight, right? We wanted to give you the key points, and then again, we'd love to meet with school subcommittees, if that's possible, and explore more options. And I, and I neglected, I neglected to say that we work directly under Dr. James LeBeau War, who guides us and leads us through this work, so much thanks and gratitude to Dr. Jamie LeBeau War. So this data here shows that self-management, as Mara just talked about, is one of the lowest rated, or is the lowest rated area across the district when we come to SEL, right? This tells us we need to focus more on helping students build skills like handling their emotions, setting goals, and managing stress. These are important life skills, and strengthening them in our SEL lessons will better support student success. We also saw an increase in students reporting high stress, especially among female students, middle schoolers, and English-language learners. This tells us we need to learn more about what's causing their stress so we can offer the right kinds of support and reduce those challenges for those students. Lastly, the data looks different from school to school. Some schools showed strong improvement, which gives us a chance to learn more from each other. By sharing what's working without judgment, we can grow together and find the best ways to support all students' social and emotional well-being. Thank you for your time and your attention tonight. The data we shared gives us helpful insight into our students' social-emotional health. It shows what we're doing well and where we can keep growing. As we move forward, staying focused on support, on teamwork, and quick responses to student needs will help us keep building a strong, positive learning environment. We'd like to also thank Dr. Ethan Kinsell to help us with, he helped us immensely with this data, and we'd like to open it up for questions.
Thank you for that presentation. I will open up the floor to the members for any questions. Mrs. Sullivan?
Thank you for the presentation. I don't have any questions, I just have a comment. I know the district has been working on this for many years, and I mean, they did have a lot of money problems, where we didn't have the money to hire school, social, school adjustment counselors, but the district, and you know, because you've been here this long, that we've been trying to, so these are great numbers to see, and I really appreciate all your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I look forward to more progress, and sounds good to me. Sounds great. Thank you.
This is one of the key points, and thank you to Representatives Gomes and Oliver for creating the Mental Health and Wellness Being Subcommittee to address that. So that's, that's a key point here. So any of the other members, Mr. Gomes, do you have any, do you have a question or a comment? I know you are remote.
Yes, both.
Floor's yours.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for the presentation. It's always good to hear data on what is going on in our school district. As the Vice Chair has mentioned, we do have a Subcommittee now, the Mental Health and Wellness Subcommittee. So I would love to see you guys once we start scheduling our meetings, come in front of us for us to have a conversation, to further analyze what's going on, how we can assist our students. Just a few questions that I have. I couldn't see the, the projection, but I was listening, so you did mention that, you know, the stress levels were high, more than half of our students did indicate that they had moderate to high level of stress. Is there any interventions that we've, that we're planning to implement as far as stress levels among students?
We work closely with our health educators as well, so, you know, school adjustment counselors and our folks that deliver instruction, and we have limited time with students, but we use that time wisely and effectively and efficiently, so we work really closely to teach coping skills, to teach deep breathing, those types of skills with, you know, small groups of students. We're looking to, we have Character Strong for our Tier One, and that has a lot of skill building in that, so our teachers can click on the Character Strong videos and show what it means to be respectful, what it means when you're feeling stressed, when you're feeling anxious, when you're feeling these certain ways. So we're working tirelessly to try to implement more of these types of skill building, whether it's classroom teachers, school adjustment counselor, therapeutic support counselors, our guidance counselors. So we have a team of folks that are working really hard to do that, and then we also partner, you know, we have some Cape Verdean Women's United come in and they do, they partner with our health educators too, and they teach a curriculum with our students, or a curriculum with our students. So yeah, we're, we're rolling up our sleeves, but we're also mindful that there's time for ELA, and there's time for math, and there's time for science. So we have some competing forces, right? And so, I mean, as much as academia is extremely important- And so, I mean, as much as academia is extremely important, I mean, we are an educational institution, that's why we're here, we, we give our students the best education. We also are very mindful that looking at the whole child in the Bronford Brenner and, and looking at the entirety of the child and working closely with the parent to find out what's going on, to help that child receive instruction the way he or she needs to, to be successful.
Excellent, thank you. And that's a good point. I was gonna ask, do we, are we providing any resources for students that can be used outside of school?
Yes, I think that everything that we teach in school is lifelong lessons, transferable to the community as well as in school.
And one other...
And...
Go ahead.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
I was just gonna add that we also met, when we, when we started the screener in the fall, we met with all of our staff, all of our school adjustment counselors, all of our school psychologists, all of our therapeutic support counselors, and really looked at making sure they knew how to identify students, they knew how to go through the data, they knew how to identify students. It's, it's really easy, once we do meet with that Subcommittee, it'll be really nice to be able to actually show you the data and how easy it is to pull up and how easy it is to sort, you know, students who are most stressed to least stressed. So school adjustment counselors do have that information, and that way they can group students according to, you know, they may, they may be doing a group on, on how to manage stress, or they may be doing a group on how to manage some sort of internalized behavior or externalized behavior, because they can use that data to really pull those students out for Tier Two groups or Tier Three groups, which has been, which has been really nice. And again, it's, it's, it's in our first year. So they're sort of getting used to it also, but we continue to, you know, remind them, and we'll do another PD with them in the fall, just to make sure that everybody is getting comfortable with the data and everybody's using the data to sort of identify those students who need the support.
Excellent. This is more of a suggestion I did here during the presentation, that we know what the issue is, but we are trying to work to figure out what the root cause is, especially when it comes to stress levels or other issues that the students are facing, even the discrepancy between female male students in, in our district. One, I guess, recommendation would be to maybe do a survey, research to see, we know the stress levels are high, but what are some of the causes of such stress? Or just to look at the situation of each individual student via survey research for us to better understand what's going on and see if we can implement some tailored interventions.
That's a great suggestion, thank you. And some of the work that we're doing already, like at the Angelo School, there's Girls on the Run, a real girls empowerment group, and other buildings are doing that as well. So like we said, learning from one another, maybe we foster and we promote Girls on the Run in other buildings and at middle school level. So there's a lot of work that we can bring from this data. We're so thrilled that we were able to, to offer this twice this year to our students. And then from there, there's a lot of kind of direct interventions gleamed from this data, so we're, we're thrilled.
Excellent. Thank you, guys, and looking forward to us touching base with the Subcommittee.
Looking forward to it, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Gomes. Mr. Vega?
First off, thank you for this presentation. You also were here a couple of months ago and, and kind of got the ball rolling in describing what your goals were. And so it's really exciting to see, here we are, and we've got all this data. So after the last time you were here, I got approached by somebody who basically categorized the idea of doing SEL work with our students as being a waste of time. Basically described it, this kids aren't gonna take it seriously, you know, we're putting money into something that could be better spent elsewhere. Like, what has been your experience with our students? Is this something they take seriously? Is this something that they're using to empower themselves? Are you seeing a change?
I, I would say that SEL work, you know, often people say, you know, you're giving us one more thing, it's one more thing on our plate. I know we're maybe biased, but SEL is the plate. We need our students to make responsible decisions, to build positive relationships. We need our students to be self-aware and socially aware. I mean, that is the, the, the very essence of who we are as human beings, right? And if we can teach that explicitly, you know, the world's a better place.
And I think it's a matter of getting people to sort of understand that SEL is embedded in everything we do, every single day, every day of the year. I think, like John said, some people think, but when we have those conversations with people and say, this is, you're doing it, you're doing it right now, exactly what you're doing, you're, you're addressing stress, you're addressing a student feeling like they don't belong, so you're, you're doing it, you're embedding it. Yes, we need dedicated time for SEL instruction, but we're also wanting to sort of just educate that it's, it's every day, all day long, we're embedding it throughout the day. Those natural opportunities to stop and take a moment and teach that SEL lesson is just embedded throughout the day. So I think for us, trying to get that message across too, is something that we're working on.
That's awesome. And I'd follow it up with, you know, what, if any, connections to families have been made or plan to be made? Because when we talk about developing these SEL skills within our students, it's also important that our parents have it, so they can help cultivate it at home as well. What, what's planned for our families?
So we have an SEL Parent Advisory Group. I see Terry in the audience, she is one of our members, and we've tried to get it out as much as possible, right? We work with Jordan Maybloom to get it out to our community as well. We've been grassroots, going to, to different places throughout the city and talking about SEL and talking about our efforts. We've been at open houses with parents, saying this is really, really important. It's not fluff. It's definitely not fluff. Yes, ELA is important, math is important, science is important, absolutely is important. This is important as well. So really getting that word out there. And I think we're doing a really good job, I really do.
I agree. And last question is, you know, now that we've got this data, we've got these piles, pile, pile of data, is there any way to leverage what we know to access grants? I mean, more specifically, other cities that might be looking for SEL grants or support in this area might not be able to quantify it in the way that we can now after the work you've done. Is there an opportunity that's opened up now to use our data to gain grants?
Yes, we use this data all the time, and we will continue to use this specific data set moving forward. We work closely with Cam Jackson, you know, talking about high stress. There is a grant, it's currently Grant 311 through DESI, and it's a, a grant that is not a competitive grant, that we will have access to it again next year. And there's focus, there's, you know, crosshairs on that grant to use it for this, this type of work and, and using that funding to promote this throughout, throughout our schools. And we have Brockton's Promise too. I don't, I don't know if you're familiar with Brockton's Promise. Brockton's Promise has been around, or was around twenty years ago. It's basically getting a, a collection of shareholders or stakeholders in the community to sit down and kind of share resources. Well, the Boys and Girls Club received a million-dollar grant, and we're a big piece of that and a big player in that, at that table. So we're working with them to capture youth voice, and we use the SEL screener with Brockton's, Brockton's Promise. And there are, like I said, key stakeholders on that, folks from, you know, every subordinate, fam, and other, Cape Verdean Women's United, and others. And that's where we really pull our resources and, and do what's best for our kids.
Well, thank you for doing this work, truly appreciate it.
But I just, I just want to add one other thing that was sort of touched upon in terms of what we can do for families and our students outside of school. And one partnership we started this year is with CareSalus, which is an amazing resource for our students, for our families, as well as Brockton employees. So that is something that, as we're reviewing the data, if we see someone might need something more, we can easily, our counselors can easily make a referral to CareSalus. And that's been great. And again, we're able to track that, and so we can see who's actually following up with ongoing therapy or family therapy or whatever the referral might be.
Mrs. Azak, followed by Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you. Actually, you answered the questions that I, I was gonna ask, and my colleagues also touched base on some of your, so I just wanted to say thank you. I know I've reached out to Mrs. Snellgrove on a few occasions. We have students that are going through so many different things in life, whether it's a loss of a family member, and so, social, emotional, this is, it affects their daily life, and a lot of times, they need that extra attention. So I just wanted to always say, I just wanted to say thank you, you've always stepped up, always stepped in and helped out anytime I reached out, so thank you. And I know more recently, I had to reach out to you. We had a student that lost a parent overseas, and they're a young student. So, again, our, our staff is amazing with the resources that you provide the families. So this, this is wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for sharing that.
Thank you, Ms. Azak. Mr. Sullivan?
Great presentation, Mr. Snellgrove, excellent. My question is, I was wondering how you collect that data? You have a ton of it up there. Is it into a questionnaire, or do you go into a classroom? Or do you talk to the kids before school or after school? How is it collected?
Sure. So twice a year, we work with Vassana in Education, and we offer the screener to the students in grades three through twelve. So it's just a thirty-five, thirty-five questions that the students are offered to take and participate in, with parental permission. Parents have the right to opt out if they don't want their child to do that, and it's done in the fall and it's done in the spring.
Has there been people that opted out?
There've been a few. You know, there were more in the fall and very few in the spring. I think we did a better job of publicizing, talking about the purpose. I had many conversations with families. We don't want to know, you know, particular things about your family, we just want to know how your children are feeling and thinking. And, and the parents would, fine, I'll allow my child to take the, take the screener.
Just a great job, job well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more follow-up questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Snellgrove and your team, and Dr. LaBilwa, you guys are doing a phenomenal job addressing mental health in, in the district. And I had the privilege of attending the Bright Program graduation and phenomenal group of students in there, so you see the work firsthand, so thank you for that. Onto the next agenda is items to refer to Subcommittee. Do any members have any items to refer to Subcommittee? Mr. Gomes, do you have anything?
Nothing at this moment.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. What is the will of the committee? Take this collectively, or does anybody want to pull anything out? Mrs. Azak?
Thank you. I just actually have a question on item number B. And it's just a general question, because I'm, I'm looking at the date, and it says June sixth, June seventh. It's coming before us now. Is it a policy that, I thought we had a policy where they need to at least get us the information ahead of time, just so we can, not that we're not gonna approve this, but it's just, just so we, if we have questions, we have time to ask questions, chaperones, things like that. I mean, anytime something's out of state, we just want to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's.
Yes, so this is because of the qualifier and the fact that they made it to Nationals?
Yeah, which is awesome.
Yeah, so, you know, the, the timeline then, based on when we make it versus, you know, getting approval from the school committee, I can in the future just send out an email ahead of time, like when we get the information, so that you're not hearing about it later. We did include all of the information about the chaperones and everything in the, in the book. But, yeah, sometimes it's hard for us to anticipate if we, you know, hopefully we'll get to Nationals, but not always, and so we wait until we do before asking for permission.
I just wanted clarification, so that's awesome. I mean, congrats to them, that's a great opportunity. That was it, vice chair.
What is the will of the committee?
Motion to approve item A, B, and C in the consent agenda, as written.
Second?
Motion was made by Mr. Sullivan, properly seconded by Mrs. Azak. I will read the consent agenda. Item A, approval of minutes of finance Subcommittee meeting, December third, 2024. Item B, approval of field trip of out-of-state empire yourself, autonomous drone national championship in New Hampshire. Item C, acceptance of human resources notifications, personnel action, leave of absence, resignations, and retirement. This will be a roll call vote due to the fact that we have a member that it's remote. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Vega?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes, but on that motion, I have a question. There's only one male chaperone, no female chaperone. And we have five students.
That's because the females that are going?
The two female will be transported by parents.
And supervised by their respective parents.
Okay, just making sure. Okay, yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We'll move on to unfinished business. Discussion potential vote, bid review Subcommittee meeting on May twenty-seventh. Mrs. Azak, before's yours.
Did we have that in here? Hold on one second. I do apologize, I don't have the bids attached with me. We don't have the bids attached, vice chair, but I do know all the bids that came before us were all the low bids, and we did approve them at the Subcommittee that evening.
Any discussion or questions, any of the members? I did watch the, the bid review, and I also participated in the opening and awarding of the bids. So I highly recommend in the future, if members are available to attend and witness the process, how transparent it is, who gets awarded these bids.
So we did ask during the bid review meeting, we did ask that we, they notify the committee, and if, if one committee member can at least be in attendance. And then we did make some recommendations as a committee of how we wanted the bids, as far as the information that's provided to us come back to us. That evening, all the bids that we had before us were approved because they were the low bids, and I can get it, I can get a breakdown for it. I do apologize, I thought it was gonna be attached to this, so it's my error, but, go ahead. I mean, they were approved by the committee.
All the members did receive the bids, so if anybody has a question, everybody had an opportunity to review it. Are you all set, Mrs. Azak? Mr. Sullivan?
Just a motion to approve the bid review Subcommittee of May twenty-seventh, as, as presented tonight.
As presented by the Subcommittee.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Sullivan, properly seconded by Mr. Gomes. This will be a roll call vote. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Vega?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
And myself, is a yes, it passes. The next is the discussion of potential vote of facility usage and planning Subcommittee meeting from May twenty-seventh. For the members, they were all present. We did have a detailed presentation by Facilities Director Ken Thompson relative to our rental agreement, where all the members did receive copies of increased prices based upon the analysis of surrounding areas relative to increasing in certain languages, relative to liability insurance. What is the will of the committee on approving the rental agreement in presentation by Mr. Ken Thompson?
Motion to approve the facilities rental agreement that was presented to us by Mr. Thompson for the 2025-2026.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Azak, properly seconded by Mr. Gomes, roll call vote. Mrs., on the motion, Mrs. Sullivan?
Question, so this is for the rental fees?
Yes.
Okay, this is just for the rental fees, one, not any of the other?
Just the rental fees that Mr. Thompson presented.
Okay, because I think in Subcommittee I voted no because of the prices were a little high and we didn't really compare to other districts, so I was a little questioning that. So I, I think I abstained in Subcommittee. So I don't really have anything to compare it, so I'm gonna vote no.
Okay, duly noted.
On the facility, one. The report thing, or master plan, whatever the thing is called.
Yeah, duly noted. Mr. Vega?
Just on the motion.
On the motion.
I, I believe, you know, just for folks at home, Mr. Thompson mentioned that prices hadn't changed in over ten years.
Thirty years.
I'm sorry?
Thirty.
Thirty, so several decades. So, yeah, so I, I do think it's important, and I'll stress this one more time, I think we need to continue to be aggressive and creative with how we rent facilities, advertise, because that's money that's sitting on the table.
On that motion?
On the motion, Mrs. Azak?
On that motion, I echo Mr. Vega's statement. We have been working on changing the fees, and we're very competitive, very, very competitive. We had Zalinda DePina, she's been working on this. She does get calls from our surrounding cities and towns asking about our rental fees. We still are very competitive. We have to keep in mind, the cost of living has gone up, the cost of gas, the cost of eggs, the cost of everything. We haven't changed our fees, but our, our expenses are getting higher, you know, utilities, things like that. So it's about time that we don't lose money by making our facilities available for everyone. It's a small increase, and we do offer a little bit of a break for a Brockton resident. We do, there was a difference as far as, it was a small, small difference in price. So for those that are watching that missed the facilities meeting, we do need to, we haven't, we haven't gone up, and they still had, it's, it's time that we increase. So I'm, I'm in favor if you want to continue with the roll call.
Any other questions and comments? I will take a vote. Mrs. Sullivan? Mrs. Sullivan? Mr. Vega?
Yes.
Mrs. Azak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
I just wanted to say, I did vote no in the Subcommittee, but I'm voting yes now after consideration. My vote is a yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
And myself as the Vice Chair is a yes, it passes. The, the next item on the facilities is, we held a facilities Subcommittee meeting on December 12th where we had activists come in and present plans specifically to renovating North Middle School, South Middle School, East Middle School, West Middle School, the Davis, Polisino Field out back behind the AZF, and three basketball courts adjacent to the pool. The only thing that's in this book is the Keith Field, which we pulled that out because the design was a little old. These plans that, all the members did receive this were actually worked on since 2022. Obviously, some things happened. This is just to approve the plans and then the next step will be to try to get funding, yeah, funding, it's actually in the, yes. Yeah, that will be worked on basically to, to get the funding on there. So I will be looking for a vote. The Subcommittee did approve it unanimous, unanimously to move it forward to the full committee for full approval.
I just have a question.
As we can see, I'll get you, as we can see is, you know, our facilities need some just, a lot of tender care and I pushed for this along with the former administration and there was a team of us with city counselors of trying to address our playing facilities for our students and also for the community moving forward. So hopefully, we can get this passed and so the public can actually view this and see the work that's being done that came out of the, the music arts and athletics and also the recommendation from our athletic director and various departments on Mrs. Sullivan.
I just wanted to, okay, so on the cost of all these things, just where the money's coming from for the cost, I just wanted to ask the Superintendent if she has a comment on.
So the, the vote tonight is just to approve the plans.
Okay, we don't know where the money's coming from yet.
So the next step is which are going to be priority and that's working with the city, the City Council.
And we have to go through the City Council.
And the City CFO to make sure that we have funding to support these projects.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah, nope, that's fine.
This isn't asking for any money, it's just to approve the design and the plans.
Making sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments by any of the members? Mrs. Azak?
Just one question, Vice Chair, I think I found it. I, I thought we need, that we were looking further into the field behind the ACF rink.
That's in here.
Yeah, did they come back? I know we had questioned something at the meeting and they were going to come back, maybe put a snack shack or something, or there was something with the design. I could be wrong, okay.
I would have to go back, but I don't.
I mean, it could always, it's not a final.
Yeah, I mean, these plans, as long as we approve these, I mean, there's always amendments.
I think it was like seating and stadium seating, okay.
Any other questions by any of the members? Mr. Sullivan?
Yes. I'm not sure if it was a meeting, last meeting or two meetings ago, that Mrs. Sullivan brought it up, that myself and her are marked absent at this and we both tried to get in and we were not allowed in.
Yes, that's correct.
Your answer at that time was you were going to take care of it, but it's not taken care of here, it's still absent on mine.
You were absent. That's just what it is. I mean, we can discuss that at a different, I'm just looking for a vote to approve this so we can carry on with the meeting.
I'm just trying to correct that.
Yeah, yeah, duly noted, it's duly noted. The meeting's being recorded, it's duly noted, we'll, we'll correct that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Comments? I'll entertain a motion. Mrs. Sullivan, floor is yours.
So the fields are included in what we're talking about right now?
Yes.
The field sheets that you gave us before?
Yes.
Polisino Field.
Polisino.
Is that the one behind Brockton I?
Yes.
Is that Polisino?
Yes, that's the design that's in your book. It's two and a half fields, baseball, there's a soccer field, softball field, there's batting cages.
All right.
There's a lot of work in, so.
Okay, so the Peralt Field is the field behind, the Peralt Playground is the one behind the Shaw School, which the Shaw School is closed. Do you know anything about the Peralt Playground behind the Shaw School?
So the Shaw School's under the city's control, so that has, we have no authority over that right now.
Right.
Unless if we want to take a vote and try to get the Shaw School back out.
But there is a sign that says, no trespassing, police take notice to enter the school. Okay, and there's a playground back there. And there's been a whole bunch of people forming back there. To me, the sign means no trespassing, you don't belong on those grounds, because I believe that building is condemned. So there shouldn't be anybody around it. So I, I wonder if, I'm going to check with Mr. Carpenter and Parks.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I know that.
He's just wondering if anybody knew anything about it.
It's on the city side, so that goes through the building, the building department.
Okay, I'll check.
So that will go through permission of pluff on that end, so.
Yep.
And what is the will of the?
Vice Chair on that, do you want them listed as they are, Maciano, Polisino, do you want them all listed individually?
Yeah, you can list them all individually if you want.
Okay.
Before we get to that, Mr. Gomes, do you have a question or a comment?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Will of the committee?
So a motion to approve the designs for the Maciano Stadium resurfacing, Polisino Field, basketball courts, East Middle School, Davis K through eight school, North Middle School, South Middle School, West Middle School, and Arnoan Elementary School. Do we need to clarify basketball courts? Is it all the basketball, all of them? Okay.
Motion was made by Mrs. Azak?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vega. We'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Vega?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. I'm going to clap to this. I have to clap because.
It's been a year since the meeting.
I, when I got on the committee, I was fighting hard to make sure that we had this design. And one of the key points is that we have middle school football and it, it saddens that our students will go play in Concord, Needham, Wellesley, Randolph, all these communities with a nice playing field, but yet they play on our field that's not nice. I played on it when I was a kid and it was beat up then. So next step is for us to make sure that we work with the city side to identify some funds and let's start tackling these fields and getting it done. I appreciate that. There was a lot of work that came into the, the design and a lot of meetings to move that forward. So I know the community is going to be very happy with that. Next, we go, Mrs. Sullivan, floor is yours.
Can I just make one comment on that? I mean, I voted yes, but I want the education to come first before we spend a lot, I want to make sure the teachers have everything they need, the kids have everything they need, the administration has everything they need before any money is exerted to fields because our number one job is to educate the students.
So.
And to make sure the teachers have what they need in the classrooms every day in order to do that job. It's, it gets to be a harder and harder job every year, every year. So I'm voting yes because I know your determination, Mr. Rodriguez, on this, but education has to come first. That's our, our number one job is the education of the children and to make sure the teachers have what they need. So as long as we take that first, then I'm okay with, if we have money for that. Thank you.
I, I truly appreciate you and I second that a thousand, a thousand percent, making sure that, you know, obviously education, but on the other point is that these are capital projects and it's the city's responsibility to fund this. So we, we're only responsible for the first 150. Superintendent knows that I'm trying to use some funds here, so I don't think DESI will approve of that, you know, that's a lot of lobbying. So we'll move on to new, actually, I already did that in the new business, voting in that. School safety and security, our police liaison, I can't see if anybody. Floor is yours, Officer Mendez.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Vice Chair, School Committee Member, Superintendent, Sergeant Livingston, Lieutenant Bonaka couldn't make it here today, but they send their best. So just a couple of things, we're continuing preparations for Safe Champion, BTDS pathways and BVLA graduation, as we know that's coming up on Friday and Saturday, for BHS Friday for the champion. We're hoping for good weather, granted, there's a little rain in forecast, but, you know, we'll adjust. We also want to say we please adhere, we want to make it about our kids and refrain from holding up the entrance lines. So I know a list has been sent out to families of the prohibited items, so if everyone could just please adhere to those, it'd make things go a lot quicker, the lines and everything. As we know, prom was last week. It was a wonderful event, punctuating an awesome year for the graduating class. We also, we conducted a, a training last Saturday. We have a robust collaborative effort with 10 agencies assisting us for the upcoming graduation on Saturday. I know Lieutenant Bonaka, Sergeant Livingston have been working very hard to make sure that graduation goes off without a hitch. So, yeah. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions by any of the members, comments? Mr. Gomes?
Not at this time, thank you.
Mrs. Sullivan, floor is yours.
I just wanted to ask the officer, could we maybe tell the people since graduation's coming up, what's not allowed in the stadium, like umbrellas and, I think there's a list somewhere of things. Because I know people get really mad when they bring something and they have to leave it outside. So if we can tell them ahead.
Yeah, so I, I know that Lieutenant Bonaka has been, has sent out letters, worked with admin, and they've sent out letters to families and days leading up, they will address that too to make sure everyone's on the same page. So hopefully, everyone adheres to those prohibited items and we can move the lines along quickly.
Thank you.
Mr. Vega?
Just a quick question. Are, are we going to use drones like were used last year?
Yes, so we have the BPD drone unit, so they, we also have BMO will have a truck over there sitting where they operate out of, but they will be having drones up in the air, so don't be alarmed if you see drones flying around.
I mean, is, is there any way to give the public a heads up on that? Because I remember last year, people freaking out a little bit because they didn't know what was going on.
Yeah, I can, I'll coordinate with Lieutenant Bonaka and he can set something up to let people know.
And if you need talented drone pilots.
Yeah.
We've got a championship group.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, officer.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other comments? Sina, thank you, Officer Mendez, for your update on, on our safety and security for the department. Next item, announcements, do we have any announcements, Mrs. Azak?
Actually, our police officer touched base a little bit. So we have graduation weekend Saturday, well, it starts Friday, so Friday we have Champion High School, BVLA, and then BTDS graduations all on Friday. And then Brockton High School is Saturday. 20% is what I'm seeing for rain, knock on wood. So far, we haven't had to cancel. But I just, stay safe. We just want to remind everybody about the graduations. And then, I think that was it. I know we're going to have a lot of graduations coming up, a lot of moving forward ceremonies for a lot of our elementary schools, our middle schools, things like that. So it's an exciting time. So we'll be seeing a lot of the families out there, but we just, and we'll all see, we'll be there on Saturday, looking forward to graduation and looking forward to Friday night as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gomes, do you have an announcement?
Not at this time. I don't think so. No, thank you.
Thank you for that. Also, I just wanted to, I forgot to mention this on the, the bid review, we also have, I just want to, you know, publicly thank State Representative Michelle Dubois. For the past three years, I've been lobbying at the state level to get some funds and part of the bid was the Davis School. We have three brand new basketball courts that are currently being built and thank you to Pat Hill and Ken Thompson and his team, the grounds crew, for getting that. In that bid, we ended up getting 150,000 and the bid came in at just over 68,000. So we have some funds to move around and get some lights there and the fencing, so it's going to be a beautiful complex once that all gets done with the field. So looking forward to that. Next item is executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair, so declares I do so. Litigation update, collective bargaining discussion, BEA, Vespa, Teamsters, IBAA, TEA.
Motion to go into executive session. Oops, sorry.
Motion was made by Mrs. Azak?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sullivan. This will be a roll call vote and we will not be coming back out of executive session. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Vega?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Thank you. And our meeting is adjourned at this moment. Thank you.